Okay, we do have a call on. My quote for this evening, "Reaction is ego," so try not to do it.[7.81][7.81]"Responding mindfully is the only way to communicate." All right, so tonight we have a call meeting to order, invocation pledge, the approval of minutes for Decatur City Council regular meeting, May 4th, 2020, at 6:00 PM. Questions? Approved monthly bills, approved April 2020 monthly bills. Questions? Resolution, Resolution 2011-111. Approved special use permit request for AT&amp;T to modify existing equipment on water tower located at 703A, Fifth Avenue Southwest. Do you have a representative on the phone for that?
Yes, Council President. David Andrews with CMS, the city's consultant for water tower communication.
Yes, sir, David, go ahead.
The resolution is an application made by AT&amp;T to modify their equipment on the existing water tower there at Fifth Avenue that's behind Station 1. They are currently providing service from this tower at a height of 117 feet. They have nine antennas mounted on the catwalk. They're not proposing any change to the antennas or feed lines. They are wanting to add a filter for those antennas, which will be mounted on one of the sectors. There should be no aesthetic change of the site, and CMS has reviewed the application and recommended approval.
Any questions? Thank you, David.
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution 20112, Athens Utility Proposal Engineering for Relocation of Utilities, Bib Garrett Row. Carl?
Yes, ma'am. This is part of our bridge project out there at Highway 20, dealing with the electric relocation of Athens Utilities. And this is an agreement we need, I guess, passed through the city council. And I'm also, I guess, going ahead and asking for the money to start their engineering of those utilities, given we get moved far along in the Radaway Act position.
Questions?
I don't have my packet opened yet. Carl, what's the amount of money we're looking at?
For the engineering fees, it was around $47,000.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Resolution 20113, approve work squad agreement with Department of Corrections. Herman?
That is, several departments in the city use Department of Corrections inmates. And this just upsets the agreement with them. There's several different departments. Rodney and Wanda have both had input into it. It lists all the agreements, the various departments that are being approved. We have still done about four or five different agreements. We just put them all in one. But it's the same entity that we're contracting with. So that's what this does. It just continues the contract we had with Department of Corrections prior to now.
Any questions?
Herman, this just puts the paperwork in place. It does not affect how this is affected by COVID-19, right?
That's right. It's just in place once they are comfortable with having the inmates come out and assist us. But no, it just puts it in place. Sure enough, it does.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Herman. Resolution 20114, approve 2020 audit plan for internal auditor. I'm sorry, internal auditor. John?
Hello, um, Ms. McKeisha.
Oh, sorry. There you go, McKeisha. Go ahead.
Yes. This resolution is in accordance with the audit charter and the detailed audit plan in which it's set up just to put more structure and it allows everyone else to get to look into the audit department, so to speak, so that we can have a structured plan and we can know what we're auditing, know what's being audited, and move forward with it. But it's in accordance with the audit charter that we already had a resolution on before.
Thank you. Any questions?
McKeisha, this still falls within the ordinary guidelines of the state of Alabama, doesn't it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh-huh.
Thank you, McKeisha. Resolution 20115, budget amendment for animal services in Mount Knottsey, 4,532, to be paid from the animal services donations.
President, David, Council, this is Captain Morgan. This is just to repair some damaged fencing on the kennels and the doors, try to prevent the animals from being able to damage the fences with their reg舊 material and add tops to some of them so the dog can't try to climb out and injure itself.
Any questions?
Captain Morgan, is this donation's already been received through the shelter or the board?
Yes, this is existing fund.
And is this damaged from weather and age?
It's from the animals. They chew through the fencing and damage the fencing and all that. That's why they're wanting to replace it with a heavier gauge.
So it's actually from use. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Captain. Ordinance number December 204410, annexation request 35920, Morris Properties, first reading to be held on 5/4/20. Erin?
Hi, this is Erin, is planning. You all last called this as a pre-zoning, a successful pre-zoning application. And this property is located north of Upper River Road, between Old River Road and Deer Road. It consists of approximately 97 acres. The asset case was submitted by P. Wright McNally on behalf of Morris Holdings LLC. And the proposed usage is consistent with the future land use map comprehensive plan and the corridors are appropriate for this type of development.
Any questions? Thank you, Erin. Ordinance number 204408, establishing the use of electronic vote counting devices for municipal elections. First reading was 5/4/20. Stacy?
Yes. This is to record what's required in the state code for the type of machines that we are intending to use in our municipal election in August 25.
Questions? All right, that is our agenda. Anything from council?
Yes. We probably need to state what our intention is based on the governor's order Friday. I'm assuming that our remote meetings are done at this point.
Actually, I asked Stacy to call the governor's office today, and that is not correct. She has not rescinded that order yet.
Well, we got people who are working, who are the businesses are capable of opening. I don't understand why we're not capable of being here to do our business.
That'd be a question for the governor's office.
But other councils around us are not doing this.
Yeah, I called. I spoke with Huntsville, Madison, Florence, and Cullman, and all of them have their council and mayor all showing up.
Again, we've been given that privilege by the governor until she rescends, and she has not rescinded that yet. Stacy, can you verify that you called and that's the order that is in place?
Yes, I did, and I forwarded to you the comment.
And you spoke with who, Stacy?
No, I didn't call the governor's office. I called the league, and they emailed me to make sure.
Well, I would say that falls under the category I've already mentioned before. Just because we have the power is not always the reason to use that power.
And I do believe too that we all know that the league offers their opinion. Their opinions are not always factual. They leak the league's opinion.
Then I request an AG opinion, and then the AG can get back with us.
Are we going to do that on a resolution then? That's what it takes.
That's fine.
I'd be happy to have it on the agenda.
Fine with me, AG opinion?
Yeah, the wording could be sensitive on that, for how you get the answer.
I'll read again.
So I think the wording of that AG's opinion should come before all of us get an email to us.
Ms. Hill did communicate to Stacy and I several weeks ago she would be out of town, so she is not here this evening or on the phone. And Stacy, I think you will take care of that resolution and send that to us in the appropriate time.
Well, I'll get with legal.
Great, thank you.
After legal and gets together with clerk's office, are we going to be able to see an edit of it? Sure?
Yes.
Thanks.
Speaking of public, is that all from you, Charles? I'd like to ask Herman to provide me with what he based his comment on that the attendance at the negotiation that happened with Mr. Colley was limited to the mayor's discretion. Everything was already known. The basis of the salary was already known. The original offer was known. The current salary was, you know, to be negotiated. Not only would I like to know why it was restricted so that a council member couldn't be there.
Billy, are you saying you didn't get the chance to be there?
I did not. I did not. But also, I would think that it would be actually open to the public at that particular point. All the variables that were pertinent were already stated. So, you know, it was just a matter of getting to that particular point. So I'd like for Herman to present me. Herman, are you there? Herman?
Yeah, I'm here. Well, the resolution, as I stated last Monday, the resolution asked the mayor to go back to the candidate and discuss it with him. That's what he did.
That's exactly right.
He got to choose whether he wanted particular individuals involved. That's, it was his assignment to do that. And that's, he chose who he wanted to participate in that. I don't know what you mean by the public. I'm not sure the public gets involved in a private negotiation till it comes back to the council for public discussion. I'm not familiar with.
And again, if it's not.
I don't have a problem with the mayor deciding who he wished to have as part of that discussion. That's what I based it on. It was his assignment, and he chose who he wanted to have involved in it.
No, but it was his assignment to negotiate the contract. That's exactly right. That is absolutely the truth. But the fact is, is that there is nothing that says that there is any form of government or government regulations that restricts who can be there. Now, he was assigned to go in to negotiate, but that does not give him the right, to him or anyone else, the right to keep one or any council members, if all the council members wanted to be in attendance and sit, because we are the ones who have to vote on what that salary is going to be. So that's not up to the mayor when it's something that the council has to vote on. And any information that we can.
That's what, his assignment is to bring it back. No, I'm not disagreeing that you wanted to be a part. His assignment was to get a negotiation, and you're most correct. It comes back to the city council at a public meeting. And that's what's here just going with.
You're absolutely right. It does come back to the council at a public meeting.
Exactly, we always do.
But the fact of the matter is, is that we are assigned to get any information that we can to make the best decision that we can. And so for me to sit in on the negotiation was the way that I felt was best to get that information. But again, I'm just asking you, because you are our legal representative, and I'm not asking your opinion. I'm asking you to share with me legally where we can restrict a council member from sitting in on a negotiation like that.
Allow me to interject here, if I may. I didn't have a real opinion one way or the other about where that was going, but we left that meeting the other day believing that you were going to be given the chance to be there and observe.
Well, I called the mayor.
If I had known that, I would ask for somebody to comment. Otherwise, are you telling me he can't be there?
Well, I would have expected that to happen too. But I tried to call the mayor early Tuesday morning, and with all the things that are going on in our community, whether it's sanitary, sewer overflow, COVID, trash pickup, anything else, the mayor did not answer my call, nor did he return my call when I left him a message to return my call. So, you know, and later that morning, the negotiations took place. So maybe he thought I was calling about that, which I was. But the mayor has an obligation as a representative of one-fifth of this city to call me back and to answer mine.
And I apologize. I left that meeting, and I thought you were going to be given that chance. I had no idea that would happen.
I was not.
Any other comments?
So that's my request from you, Herman, is to show me.
I've done the very, I don't, I based it on y'all getting the mayor.
The authority to negotiate.
Negotiate, well, you know what I mean? To negotiate, he decided that he negotiated in one fashion. I don't know if he could have decided to include, but if you bring the whole council in, it's fine if that's what the council wanted to do, is publicly negotiating. But the mayor chose not to involve you or any other council member, apparently, based on the information I have. But my, at your last Monday night, was the same. It is that he was given his honor. He can choose who he wants to participate and give him input back.
So you're basically giving an opinion not based on any law?
I don't know of any law that requires the mayor to negotiate with a council member present.
Well, that was not what I said. I didn't say a law that requires him to negotiate with a council member present. I'm asking for a law that allows him to restrict a council member from not negotiating, but being in attendance when the negotiations are going on.
Well, the negotiations are normally begin out private in nature, and that's the way negotiations. I understand your request, but the information I am basing this on is that was his decision and his discretion to make.
And you're basing that, I guess.
That was what y'all authorized him to do. You authorized him to negotiate it and to bring back a report to the council.
I think we're playing with semantics, because you're right. We did authorize him to negotiate it. But you said that it's his call as to who's there. I'm just simply wanting to, and you're, I'm just simply wanting to know what we're basing that on. That it's his call and that no one else can be there.
The other thought is, the council meets as a group. That's how y'all meet. You don't meet individually, and so.
We have a council, Herman, we have a council member that sits on the planning board and does not vote on the planning board, does not give an opinion on the planning board and sits there. And it's always, that's always been the case.
No, that's not true. You vote on the planning board, you just don't vote.
You can't vote on things that are going to come back to the agenda. That's what, that's my point. But wait a minute.
Hang on, Herman.
He does not vote on things that come back to the agenda, or he's going to have to relinquish his vote at that time.
But it's discretion.
What?
I said, he said.
That's his discretion, but he can't vote if it comes back here.
He wants.
That's, I fully, I fully understand that. But my point is, when you say that council members don't meet as one, that's an example of where one council member sits with a board or sits in and knows what's going on. So realistically, my intent was simply to sit, to listen. It was clarified that I had no intent of being a part of the negotiation. I simply wanted to hear what was going on. And I don't think that there's any provision in our law that restricts that from happening. Now, for you to give your opinion, that's one thing. But for you to say that this can't happen is something totally different.
Now, you're playing with my words. I said last Monday, and I said, I said last Monday night, the mayor had the discretion to involve whoever he wished to within the negotiations. He chose not to use a council member's input. That was his assignment. I don't know of any authority that requires him to use input from anybody other than what he chooses to, because it's not a final decision. The decision comes back to the city council for y'all to review and make a decision on.
And you're exactly, you're exactly right. Excuse me one second. But you're exactly right. For clarity's sake, no one asked for input. No one asked for input. Simply wanted to sit there and listen to the negotiations. So there was no intent to give input. There was no request to give input. I simply asked to be in attendance so that I could hear the discussion. So.
And he still, I'm sorry.
Mr. Herman.
He simply decided not to allow that to occur.
And I'm simply asking, and I'm simply asking, what are we basing that on? It's a very simple question.
Well, there's no authority. The mayor has no requirement to involve a city council member in negotiations between a candidate. There is no authority that says he must do that. Of course, there is no authority that says he can't do that. I'm saying it's his discretion as to who he wishes to involve. And that's the clear cut, that was his clear cut assignment and what your involvement was. He chose not to honor your request, is what it boils down to.
I have to say one more thing. And you say that that is his discretion. Now, before then, you were saying that it was the Human Resources Director who was assigned to do that. Now you're saying, but so in a week's time, we did a resolution. I understand that. But in a week's time, it changed from one person's discretion to another. You know.
Let's talk about that just a minute, okay? I appreciate that. All right. Under the policy that y'all at the city council adopted last May, May 2019, the negotiations were to be handled by the Human Resources Department and or the director. Y'all passed a resolution last month, or whatever it, you passed a resolution, I guess it was last Monday, that requested the mayor to do that. So that you changed the policy that y'all established back in May. That's, I've not changed it, y'all changed. And that's fine, because you and I talked about it.
That's exactly right.
And we wanted it to be warranted. That was fine with me. And I wanted it that way, so.
And let's be clear, Herman. I have no problem with the mayor negotiating, because I firmly believe that that's his responsibility to negotiate it. But everything, all the variables were there. His salary, the current salary, the original offer, all the variables were there. I simply asked to sit in on it. That was all. And so to say that it's the mayor's discretion, I don't know. And I've looked. I can't find anything that restricts anybody from sitting in on that. And for a council to have to come back and as liaison to that department too, or a council to have to come back and make that informed decision, I simply wanted to know what was going on, very simply.
Mr. Jackson, go ahead.
I'm on the table. Okay.
Herman, I just want, for the record, I called you the next day. And my issue was the liaison position, that Mr. Jackson is the liaison to HR, not HR, I'm sorry, to DYS.
DYS.
And at that time, I asked you, is there any law? I was just confused. I thought if we were the liaisons, we were that kind of glue between the department and whatever department needed to talk to them. I asked for direction on, I mean, what's the purpose of a liaison if we can't be that middle man, if you will? I think each of us have nine departments that we are liaisoned to. I know, I appreciate at times to sit in on those departments that I represent. And that was the basis of my support of Mr. Jackson going is he is the liaison to that department. And I do see where it does say it's the mayor's discretion. Well, it is the mayor's negotiation, and I guess it is his prerogative on whom he invites to that. And that's fine, but I do think that should be called into place at times. If our liaison positions have no merit or no weight for us to actually be there for things like that, then I don't know why we have them assigned to us. So that's all I have to say.
And Herman, let me add on to what page we're saying, please. That conversation here was clear to me. And remember that these meetings are streamed. The public is capable of watching those meetings. And I will guarantee you, the public thought Mr. Jackson was going to be there. So if somebody is deciding that he cannot be there, then this body and the public needs to be told that.
Especially when we had every opportunity at that particular time, when everybody was online and listening. We had the opportunity at that particular time to say that it wasn't going to happen at that particular time. We didn't have to wait and read it in the newspaper the next morning.
Anything else from council on any other subjects?
I was expecting something, some sort of open response from the mayor today.
I think he'll, okay. Let's do directors, anyone from directors have anything? I'm sorry, Rochelle, I think you did, don't you?
Yes, I do. We have the fire chief, they can see that, you know, we need some guidance on whether or not to move forward with, and the director of development. They've got HR provided those candidate profiles and asked for some guidance on, she made a recommendation on the ones that she would recommend for her first interview. So now that things are opening up and we're kind of moving in a, into our new normal, need some guidance on when we're going to move forward with those.
Anything from council on direction for her?
I'd suggest we each submit the names of the people we want to go forward with, to Rochelle and to.
You speak as a director of development at this time, Chuck?
Excuse me?
You speak as a director of development?
The development, the ones that we went through, yes.
Okay.
As far as if we want to continue the next step.
And when do you anticipate, the next meeting, next month?
Well, I'm saying we can give that to her before the next meeting.
Okay.
You say each of us give our own?
Yeah.
What about fire chief? I'm just curious. You say the same thing for that? I know we have 11 that were brought to us. Actually, there's more, but 11 that were recommended.
It's Rochelle again.
Yeah.
It has been some time since we posed in that position originally. I do know of two candidates that had accepted other offers at other agencies. It would probably prudent to refresh the candidate pool.
Okay.
I would say we ought to ask her to refresh the candidate.
Does anybody have a problem with that, refreshing the candidate pool?
I don't have a problem with that at all. I do think that my position still stands that, and I don't mind moving forward, looking at the candidates, but as far as hiring, I think that we need to get some of this stuff behind us to make sure exactly what our budget is going to look like following this.
Chuck, back on what you suggested, the last time we did this, I think not everybody submitted the same number of candidates, and that does concern me. It kind of dilutes the one-man-one-vote thought process. So we should each have X amount of suggested candidates, in my opinion.
I have to say, I guess, a different opinion to that. I only thought two on that first page were qualified at all for that job.
Well, suppose you recommend two, and I recommend six. See where I'm coming from?
I do, but I don't think you should make me recommend five people if I don't think they are qualified at all for the job.
I tend to agree with that. I think that if we're going to, no matter what the category is, to say that, I think that if we come in and there are five candidates that have three votes or whatever, we move forward with that. But to say that we should have a specific number, I could see where I might have 10 and you might have one.
And I think you've said an excellent point is is that anybody that has three should be brought in, because that's a majority of the council.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable then that we will give Rochelle our thoughts on director of development, and then we will ask her to go ahead and refresh that?
Is she going to send that to us electronically or on paper?
Which one?
The fire chief.
Rochelle, once you get that refreshed list, you will send it to each council member, correct?
Yes, as I did the original list. I think when I say refresh, I'm recommending that we repost the position to make sure that we don't have new candidates.
Okay.
And then after that posting period, provide a refreshed list.
Okay, and you will put a hard copy in each of our boxes on the fifth floor as well as an electronic copy, correct?
Absolutely.
That's your number?
Would it not be easier just to call the 11 candidates, or however many there were, and find out how many of them are still interested?
Sending anything to you right now is premature if you're going to repost it.
I think that's what she said, to repost it. And once she's finished, she will, as she always does.
Why do we need to repost it?
That's what her recommendation was.
But I think that we might even have candidates who did not apply that time that might be very capable candidates, and we might need to repost.
Rochelle, you did say you're recommending we repost it. Is that correct?
I am.
Okay. Could you just give us a reason why, just for the record?
Well, for the record, that posting came down the end of December. We're now four months in, almost five. We need to get a clear understanding of the candidates who originally posted, and I call them individually. call them individually, and then if there are other candidates out there who either missed the opportunity to apply, or were not aware of the opportunity, you know, it just, I think it's to the city, in the city's best interest that we make sure we've captured all qualified candidates and a current status.
Thank you.
I'm all right with that.
Okay. So are you clear, Rochelle, we are, we're asking you to do that, and also we will give you our submissions for director of development?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other directors?
We need to get you all to nominate somebody to the IDB board. No, IDB, I'm so sorry. Economic Development.
EDA?
Yes.
Is there a given position that's normally on that, Wally's position?
No, it is the term expiring right now.
Can you tell us who's in that position currently?
Brent Sexton is the Decatur.
Has he been under two full terms?
Three. Three.
Say it, I think it'd be at least.
So, so we need a new name for that? Okay. Can we submit those to you between now and Monday? Is that, if anyone has that, if you have any questions about EDA boards, you can call Stacy, and she can confirm what that role is? Is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you. What term is that? Is that, I mean, is it a four-year term or a three-year term?
I believe that one is.
I think it's longer.
I think it's like five.
Okay. If you can just clarify, send us an email, clarify all that, that'd be great. Thank you. Anything else from directors? Mayor? Mayor, are you on the line? I thought I was going to be on the line. Mayor? Oh, yeah. Okay, while we're waiting on Mayor, can you please text him and tell him we can't hear him, and we're requesting that he.
Maybe he's got his mute button on.
He may, she'll text you. We have Brenda Henson here, she is with the historical downtown. They put in the phase one for the signs downtown. That has happened, and they have a grant that they must by a certain date have those phase two signs up to receive that grant money. Brenda, would you like to discuss that a little more, please?
I would. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. As Paige just mentioned, my name is Brenda Henson, I'm the president of the Historic Decatur Association. I'm here to present behalf of the combined Albany and Old Decatur Historic District, seeking your approval for phase two of the wayfinding signage project. First, for your contributions toward making phase one a reality, thank you, Mayor and City Council. A special thank you to the McCom Group, Parks and Recreation, and the Historic Decatur Association Board and its members. As you may recall, phase one was funded by the Historic Decatur Association membership. Phase one included four signs that were received and installed by City's Parks and Recreation Department. Again, we can't say enough thanks to Parks and Recreation, specifically Jason Lake, Aaron Lane, and their team. Hopefully, each of you has a chance to admire the recently installed phase one signs beautifully, marking some of the entrances to Albany and Old Decatur. To review, the Historic Decatur Association came before you in 2019, seeking approval for eight wayfinding entrance signs for the combined Albany and Old Decatur Districts, to be purchased and installed in two phases. In that meeting, on behalf of the association, I presented photographs of the proposed eight signs and their proposed locations. Although, at the time, we were installing only four signs in phase one, all eight entrance signs, their locations, and their request for sign installation by City Deputy were presented. When you approved the project in 2019, you requested we return to the council for additional approvals before proceeding with phase two, which is the final four signs. It is important we move at this time on phase two, as funding for this portion of the project, as Paige just mentioned, is dependent upon a reimbursement grant, provided to the HCA by Alabama's Mountains, Rivers, and Valleys Resource Conservation and Development Council. As mentioned, this is a reimbursement grant, the funds of which will not be reimbursable until phase two signs are installed and completion paperwork is submitted. The deadline for this reimbursement submittal is September 3, 2020. Based on the unforeseen and unpredictable COVID-19 pandemic, we have been advised by a representative of the Alabama Mountains, Rivers, and Valleys Council to hurry phase two implementation while funds remain available. And it is important to note that without this reimbursement grant, phase two signage will not be funded. In summation, we respectfully come before you today, seeking council approval for sign designs, receipt of, and installation of four signs mirroring phase one with two design exception changes. These exceptions are necessary based on land layout at two of the locations. The locations for phase two signs, just to review, are in Old Decatur, at Canal Street and Highway 20. This will be replacing an old existing sign. Sign number two in Old Decatur is the entrance at Walnut Street, beside the Chamber of Commerce, also replacing an old existing sign. This sign was initially presented with a 16-foot pole, however, based upon the land design with a big oak tree there, the 14-foot version will be necessary based on the oak tree's proximity. In Albany, sign one is on Molten Street at Sixth Avenue, at the Old Express Oil location. This has also been spoken to about with Rick Tamer and approved. The second sign in Albany is on Gordon and Sixth, in front of the Dogwood Tree. This sign also requires an exception as the land topography is such that a tall sign will not work in that location. So this sign will require a single-sided, double-posted sign instead of the original 16-foot version presented in phase one to you in 2019. Please approve this project as presented, and let us help increase the visibility of our wonderful city through visitations of our historic district.
Brenda, let me clarify, let me clarify, they must be ordered, the signs, they must be received, and then they must be installed before the September date, so you can get your reimbursement. So we're really on a time crunch anyway, so this is time-related. Any other questions?
I have a question. You said that we only get reimbursement after all of these things have happened, but that the project can't move forward without the reimbursement. So I'm kind of confused with that. How do we move forward? We don't get reimbursement until afterwards, but then how do we move forward if the money's not there? That's what I'm kind of fuzzy on.
Well, we have made an agreement with McCom Group that we will, we will be fronting one half of the 30, it's a little bit over $31,000. So we do have enough funds in our account to fund one half of the cost upfront. We will not, however, have the availability for the rest, but McCom Group has agreed to allow us to wait until the funds become available to pay off the debt, so to speak.
So let me, let me ask you this, what's the possibility that we not receive the grant? Is there a possibility? I mean, of course, there's a possibility, but what's the likelihood that we don't receive the grant?
Well, according to the representative right now, if we, if we move forward quickly, you know, it's, he didn't tell me, just to be honest, you know, what the possibility is. What he was saying is, we just never know, because we're in unprecedented times. And if someone in charge of the purse string takes a notion to look at the funds that have not yet been used, that we run the risk of those funds not being available if they proceed, we are not hurriedly moving forward. And I would go on to say, initially, because we took so long to get phase one, and before COVID-19, we, even though the paperwork said we had a September 3 deadline, based on how long it had taken us to get phase one completed, this group was going to be lenient with us on that deadline date. But now that COVID-19 has happened, and the prediction is that if on the road, funds will be looked at closer, you know, that's the reason that they called to say, have you started on phase one? And if you haven't, you need to go ahead and get started in case these funds come into question. If you, if you have already started, it's not likely that they would get pulled, but if you haven't started, then, you know, that, that might be another long game.
And Brenda, let me clarify, this $32,000 is coming out of the historical group's funds, not city funds. So that is the historical group, and y'all have the agreement with MCOM, if the grant were to fall through, that would be between you and MCOM as far as the reimbursements to them, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, just to make sure. So the 32 is not a city fund.
Ms. Henson, a lot of very technical details. I thank you for what you presented, I'm sure it was a little difficult getting it all out there for us.
I appreciate it as well.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Mayor, are you, oh, thank you. Mayor, are you on the line?
Well, I'm certainly out, so can you hear me?
We can hear you now, yes, sir.
Thank you. I can hear you all earlier, and my mute button was off, I'm sorry that had that delay. But hey, I'd like to, I've been trying to talk throughout the afternoon, and obviously I haven't been heard. I'm going to go back to the, how council meetings were held prior to the social distancing guidelines that are still in place, and just, would you all just sign on that?
We're going to ask the AG's opinion.
Okay. First of all, kind of bring up, bring on directors inside the six-foot social distancing, and our city council, it's, it's very concerning. And I, I guess if you're one of the AG, would just trust the AG.
Well, we can, we can include the, the directors, as well as how we need to convene as a council, we can do that, I think that's fine, Stacy, it's just in the wording of the, we just need to get some clarification on how to move forward, Mayor.
I, now, I personally don't necessarily think that the directors have to be here, but I do think that if we're in a voting posture, that we should be here to cast our vote.
And we have one council member that's due in July the first child.
June, yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. I want to add another thing for the council on the negotiations that took place with Mr. Colley. What I would ask, if that's okay, is I'm going to go through all of it that took place, and then if there are questions, then by the help of the questions, as best we can, is that fair?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Also, as the, for the council to follow up to Resolution 2019-19, I contacted Mr. Colley on Tuesday morning. I invited our human resource director, Rochelle Samler, and personnel board chair, Dr. Harold Gilmore, to join me on the call. From the onset of the call, Mr. Colley expressed a very specific request that his privacy be respected regarding anything he shared during the call. I agree to the verbal parts of our negotiation could remain confidential, but a written offer would be subject to the Freedom of Declaration Act. Mr. Colley knew that I would need to report the details to the city council once our discussions were final. We, and that was to be done tonight, by the way, during the work session as a party. So we had an open and transparent review of the salary range for the youth services director, classifications, and opportunities within the pay range, as viewed from both perspectives. Once I confirmed Mr. Colley was willing to discuss the opportunity, I started with a 2.5% increase over the previous negotiation, which would have started Mr. Colley at a little more than $74,000. And then at six months, we would sit down and have a review, as typically whenever we could, you know, hopefully do a good job with our hiring process and such, and managing for success. And at that point, we'd have gone up another step, which would have been more than $76,000. And then finally, in a year, Mr. Colley would have received $78,000 to include up to $8,000 in relocation expenses. And throughout the discussion, Mr. Colley expressed an increased salary need beyond the original for request for $85,000. This was one that, he initially had said that he required $85,000 to $90,000, but then he really became firm on the $90,000. So I invited Colley to share his perspective and rationale. And so he firm on the $90,000, somebody that has their phone muted, don't think. Mr. Colley was firm on the $90,000 based on his experience and concerns about relocating to Decatur and not having that eight-to-five of our traditional business hours. He understood that this was going to be more, much like a pastor's roles, in the way that his job would be. And so we confirmed his increased starting salary requirements was firm and locked in at $90,000. I thanked him, and I shared that I would take time to consider our conversation before concluding our call. Mr. Colley again specifically asked that the city respects his privacy as for the, as to the details of the discussion. I've reviewed the increased starting salary requirements for the Dr. Gilmore, our personnel board chair, and Rochelle. And after comparing to other department director tenures, roles, and responsibilities, including the starting salaries and their, their bases for the department directors that have been hired over the past four years, it was concluded that his locked-in increased salary requirement had rendered any contingent offer that could be supported or recommended to this council as irrelevant. I contacted the council president prior to following up with Mr. Colley, and shared the confidentiality commitment I made to Mr. Colley, and told the council president that, and I quote, really, the bottom line in this is that Mr. Colley's salary needs increased and remain locked in.
Mayor, Mayor, let me stop you there. You did not call me, actually Rochelle called me. After the first conversation you had, I asked Rochelle immediately, who was in those negotiations, I was told then it was only you, Rochelle, and Dr. Gilmore, I asked if Mr. Jackson was contacted, and I was told no. I did listen to your conversation at the end, I did request that someone call Mr. Jackson and tell about that conversation, just so that is clear. And again, Rochelle called me, I'm sorry, Rochelle called me, left a message, I called Rochelle's phone back, then she went on to a, you know, had it open, and then you were on there. So just to be clear, Rochelle actually called, I called Rochelle back, but go ahead.
Okay. I've shared the information that I'm sharing with you, and I'll start again. So really, the bottom line is that Mr. Colley's salary needs increased and remain locked in. What we offered became meaningless at that point. And following up with Mr. Colley later in the day, I shared that his increased salary need was beyond what we could support, recommend it, and thanked him for considering the city while wishing him well. Mr. Colley was gracious, said he understood it, and expressed gratitude for the opportunity to explore his interests further, and in turn wished the city well. The next morning, I was contacted by Bane Hughes with the Decatur Daily, and Bane asked me if I'd talked to Mr. Colley, and I confirmed that I had. He asked for some information regarding the discussion, and I told him that I had made a commitment to keep our negotiating details confidential, and I couldn't share them. Furthermore, I told Bane that I did not want our city council to learn the details of the negotiation in the paper, but I would share them as I am right now during this work session. Bane called me the next day, which I believe was Thursday, and he started out asking the same questions, and I explained again that I couldn't respond. This time, Bane said that he received a wake-up call from a source who had shared the details of the negotiations that we had with Mr. Colley with. And I was still comfortable with my position and commitment to Mr. Colley. I asked Bane if he would share his source, and he, he did not do that. Thursday, before noon. Thursday, before noon, Rochelle received a call from Mr. Colley asking if the city would consider another attempt to negotiate with him. So Rochelle phoned me, I knew the direction that the council had provided, and wanted me to look with Mr. Colley so he could serve his, became his services director, so I agreed to speak with him. So Mr. Colley, he remained uncaught while I transitioned from the sixth floor to the HR Department's second floor. Mr. Colley asked if we could, once we started talking and he shared we wanted, if we could consider $85,000. I told him that we couldn't, but I laid out a plan that included another 2.5% increase. So really, as you understood the three-step process that I shared earlier, this basically was a $2,000, so it would have been $76,000, $78,000, and $80,000. So we talked about the 2.5% annual increase that he would enjoy, 12 remaining step increases on, and he also would enjoy the $8,000 reload assistance. Mr. Colley, he thanked us for our time and willingness to talk with him. He asked for an opportunity to discuss with his family and said he would respond on Friday. And so we got the phone, and before I left the Human Resource Conference Room, I remembered how concerned Colley was about his privacy and confidentiality, and it just kind of struck me that I felt the city deserved the same courtesy until he requested a formal offer. So we were able to have another call with Mr. Colley, and I shared about the disappointment I may have created with one or possibly more of our council members and the Decatur Daily reporter in honoring his privacy request. I asked Mr. Colley if he would kindly extend the same courtesy of confidentiality to the city until we came to a conclusion, and he kindly agreed. Early 30s Thursday evening, Mr. Colley phoned Rochelle and me, separate calls, sharing that he had talked with a member of our city council and that after he thought we had concluded discussions on Tuesday, Mr. Colley felt it important to dispose that as we moved forward. And I thanked Mr. Colley for his honesty, asked him if he had any discussions with any council members since our calls earlier, and that same day, and he assured me that he had not. And then finally, the next day, Rochelle received an email from Mr. Colley declining to serve as our committee of services director. And that completes my report.
I have a couple of questions, I don't know if you do.
None of this one.
I have a few questions, Mayor. I'm not quite sure, and I don't know, legally, you may or jump in. I don't know why it matters, and it wasn't me, I'm just going to say, but it doesn't matter, in my opinion, if all five council members talked to Mr. Colley. I'm not quite sure why that is an issue, in my opinion, should not be. I have talked to Mr. Colley, but it was prior to the vote on Monday, it was not after Monday's decision. But I'm not quite sure why that's an issue, number one. And I did ask when I was called, or when I called Rochelle back on, I guess, assuming Tuesdays when y'all talked to me, that was there a formal written offer? There has not been, there wasn't that day, and there still has not been. And I think for me, the 85, him coming back and forth in the negotiation process, I'm not quite sure, council would make that decision on what council thought that director's salary should be, would they not in the end, legal?
That is true.
So I'm not quite sure why the 85 offer didn't come to council prior to tonight, but that's just, I guess, something to think on. I guess it concerns me because I think now Mr. Colley and potential other employees that are out there that want to come to the city may wonder if we have our ducks in a row for the appropriate negotiations to even come here. But, so that's questionable, I think we need to really do a better job of that in the future, but that's, those are the only things that I have.
Quick question, can I ask a question? This is a very unusual negotiation. We've, of course, prior to me coming home, we brought in Chief Allen and Rochelle, negotiated that up, and then, of course, we brought John on board and successful negotiation there as well as Wanda. And so, you know, the RHR Department is very capable of negotiating these agreements with people that want to work for the city of Decatur.
And I don't disagree with you, but if you go back to John's interview and all that stuff, and then Wanda's, we had two, I think, council members present at those, and I guess my question is, if they, if we were there, why weren't we not at this one? It's just not very consistent, but, I mean, that's just a thought.
We were not at the negotiation with their salary.
We were at their interviews, and we kind of knew they were talked about during those interviews.
Okay, but you're written Mr. Colley's interviews, and then as to Mr. Jackson's question on being invited or not being invited, I did receive some guidance from the Personnel Board Legal Council that that should not take place. And so that, as well as, Rochelle, help me here, did Dr. Gilmore provide the same counsel?
Well, Dr. Gilmore leaned heavily on them for their history and their background here, so the process that we have followed with are, please see the CFO, Director of Landfill, has been consistent, the same process we followed with this position. I did see guidance from our Personnel Board Legal on setting a new precedent with having a council member present or even a public discussion about salary, and, you know, those discussions, of course, are privileged, but it was just against legal counsel to start changing that precedent at this stage in this situation.
But I think what we've done is we've changed the precedent throughout. When we talk about John's negotiation, when we talk about Chief Allen's negotiation, when we talk about Wanda's negotiation, you negotiated those. That's the precedent that's been changed. So we can talk about changing precedents all we want to, but those have all been changed. But the fact of the matter is, is that HR is not an apartment of the city, first and foremost, and for their legal to say what we should do as a city, that's only a guideline, that's a suggestion. And there is no legal parameter that says that I or any other council member could not have been there or should not have been there.
Could I ask two questions, please? I got one question procedurally, and the second question's a little bit technical. When the council, legal council for the HR Board, was asked about a council member being present, were they told specific about the council having a discussion about a council member wanting to observe?
The discussion was exactly that. We had, the council person, again, is privileged conversation, but yes, the legal counsel was made aware that this council person made a request to attend.
Did they have the information that he was also the liaison to that department?
I slept a few nights on my vacation day, I would think so, but I wouldn't commit to that.
All right, my second question, my second question, in these negotiations you talked about, and you talked about 2.5%, now is that basically from the steps for our merit employees?
The same pay scales apply to all employees, merit and exempt.
Merit and exempt, both have steps like that?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Which is important to me, we gave this effort in trying to do what you sent us to do, and that was to bring Mr. Colley and help him become part of our team, and we, you know, we just, even where we talked down at $80,000, we were not successful.
Anything else from council?
Don't we need to decide how to go on from there at that point? I mean, I realize we're not here to decide tonight, but don't we have a decision to make?
And definitely not, I think they made a decision for us, that's the problem I have.
But, I mean, does the council now have one candidate left, or what's going to happen next?
HR? Rochelle, do you have an answer for that?
Yeah, let me go back to the offer process. Historically, at least since I've been here, I can't speak to what happened before, but we talked to the candidates, make sure that the salary that we're offering them is agreeable, then we follow up with a contingent written formal offer. At that point, once we've gotten a consent from the candidate, that that's acceptable, that's when we have brought the ordinance forward that recommends or suggests that the council adopts, I'm sorry, appoints that candidate at that range, at that step, with relocation or whatever, with an estimated start date. There's no preclusion to not seek some improvement on how the process works, but we've consistently followed the same process since I've been here. In terms of what's next, I think that there was an agenda item that was pulled off, there needs to be probably closure to that, and whatever the council decides on that, then you, you know, would repost the opportunity if that decision is to not move forward.
Are you saying we should decide whether to repost, or we should get feedback from you?
There is no playbook for this process. We're doing the best we can with the information that's provided as we go. I, the council is very clear that it's a council decision. I could use your help.
Okay, let me help you out, Rochelle, everyone except Masheel. Where would this council that's here present tonight like to go forward in the D O S direct position?
I don't think we have, if Mr. Colley's not going to accept, I don't think we have any choice but to open up again.
I totally agree with Mr. Jackson about opening it up again for new candidates, Mr. Kirby, Mr. R.
I can't disagree with it.
Mr. R., do you have a comment?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay. I mean, Rochelle, since you're going ahead and opening back up, the fire chief, I think this would be a great opportunity to do the same thing with this one, so that's okay.
Does, I need to comment, or some legal, does that need to come forward as a resolution on the agenda on Monday night?
I think you've got another.
I think the council, if I'm hearing it, sometimes it's difficult to hear full council, but if I understood you wanted to open it back up, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, very good. You can just share that with the HR director, if you want to open it back up, and Rochelle, I believe that's enough for you to go forward with opening it back up, just like they just did with the fire chief.
Now, how many do we, how many do we need?
There was, and that's okay, there was a pending resolution that was on the agenda that was removed, I don't know what the status of, but if y'all, if the majority of the council wants to open it back up, then it would appear that that resolution.
That's a moot point.
Has no clarity.
It would be off until somebody.
I would like to put it back on, Rochelle, you should fill, authorize, and go ahead and open it back up.
I'd like to put the resolution that was taken off on the agenda because that person needs to know whether or not to apply if we open it back up.
If y'all want it back on, it goes back on. Right now, it's not, it's just out there, and that's why it was tabled rather than anything else, so if you want it back on, it comes back on and then it's voted on. So if we need to put that back on, is that for Monday?
Yeah, is that okay? It's back on the agenda for Monday?
If the council wants to put it back on, yes, put it back on, yes.
Okay, we'll put that.
But you have to, you have to hear the directions for the HR director, so if that's what the pleasure is, sure, I agree with you, put it back on, yes.
Well, I guess Rochelle, Monday, after we vote, will be clear on what to do, how about that?
Your right.
Well, obviously, if that's voted down, there's no option but to reopen, so I mean, no.
Correct, yeah. All right, anything else? Gosh, it seems like there was one more thing, but I forgot, and I can't remember, I'm sorry. Nothing else for directors, mayor, or council? Thank you.
Bartleson and James. Bartleson and James, thank you for your support.